And we're live.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to do this motion in our.
My office too.
We want to do this motion like solid waste.
Yeah.
Which motion is that?
We got an email from Chris this morning.
I don't know if I have it.
It's right there.
I hereby move to affirm and approve the direction taken by the president of this board, including affirming and approving that based upon the present situation created by COVID-19 and during the situation that the public meetings of this board will be open to the public by way of live streaming at and against the web address in lieu of the public gathering in the commissioners' board meeting room.
Okay.
I will second. I'll second.
With two seconds apparently. I think I seconded first, so I'll go ahead and second.
Okay.
Good. And I'll call the roll call.
Oh, Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sabrina?
No.
Great. Okay, just to announce to the public, because of the COVID-19 situation, the board is, under the circumstances for the safety and health of the public, doing public access via live web stream. And we want to thank the staff and our IT department for their quick ability to get the web stream up and running. And again, we're doing this for the health and safety of the public and for the commissioners and for our staff.
I'd like to make a comment on that. Last night, we were notified at like 6:30 that the ordaining was moved from nine to 10:00. What kind of public notice was given to the public in time for that? And what was the justification to just move it, delay it one hour?
The public was notified via our notice to the media and then to all the people who are on the agenda for today's meeting were noticed. The reason that we delayed the meeting today was so the public, if they showed up today at 9:00 AM, would have time to return home and get the live web stream up and running. Out of a courtesy to them to make sure that public access truly was granted to this meeting. I think because of this emergency health crisis, we have to act quickly in order to preserve the health and safety of the public and our staff. And I just want to say how much I appreciate everyone's accommodation of fast-moving changes and dealing with this issue, which literally is changing minute by minute, hour by hour, and what our response should be.
But what is the CDC's limit on how many people can gather at this time? Do you know? And the reason I'm asking you that is because you said that this meeting would be livestreamed and the public could still come, but then we were going, moving forward, we were going to try to livestream and notify the public. And I know you had an exchange with Mr. Ames, who's upset that he's not allowed in here today. And my question is, did he receive proper notice?
He did. He actually received special notice. We emailed him last night, the notice. And we also provided adequate public notice of today's meeting. And that's on advice of both legal counsel and following an opinion from the attorney general. Again, these are emergency circumstances, dealing with a public health crisis, and we're doing the absolute best that we can to preserve the health and safety of the public and of our staff and following the law at the same time.
Well, I guess my only question to you was, is I received the email, a general email last night, and I guess I'm concerned because Amy references that the board decided? I was not consulted in this decision. And you know, as the board is set up, you unilaterally do not have the decision-making authority by yourself. So how did this come about?
With that, I'm going to recess into solid waste, and we'll start in solid waste. So you are off.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Bill.
I move to approve the minutes, March 12, 2020.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I move to approve the March 19, 2020 bills as presented by the county auditor.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Move to approve the March 19, 2020 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I move to approve the March 19, 2020 bin and mass certification as presented by the county auditor.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Would you like some clarification on D, the budget amendment? We're moving 49,500.
That's other trucks.
As for the truck, yes. As for the used truck we just purchased.
Yeah.
Bill, do you know what those account, what the account is, 8300?
That, that was a ton. Agenda, so that kind of popped on after I turned one.
Okay, I'll ask him because I've got a cheat sheet and I want to see his numbers.
So that's the truck that you already had delivered that was there, so is that?
We've checked it out. It's in great shape.
Is it up and operational?
No, we cannot because, first of all, we have to pay for it. I'm sure the vendor, he's a great guy. He likes us, we like him.
Is it ready to go?
It is ready to go, but here's one of the challenges that I face because, but the BMV is being closed now. And normally, when we buy a truck from out of state, we have, the title comes to us. We normally will take the truck and the title or the paperwork to the BMV so they can verify that the VIN number match. And then generally, I'm not sure how we're going to get this on the road, but I'm going to probably call the highway patrol or get there and pay it. What we can do about it, temporary tag until we get the plates from the state. So I'm going to work through that today just to see how fast we can get this truck up and running.
I thought we were still doing like, yeah, like commercials.
They are, yeah. So we may have to take the truck to Cleveland, but I want to make sure that it's in our name. We have insurance coverage on it before it leaves the lot. You know, whether we're going to go have it, have the VIN number checked or anything like that and get plates on it.
Okay. Okay, move to amend to the 2019 annual propagation resolution number 19-193, effective December 19, 2019.
I will second. Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I move that the board commissioners agreed to authorize the full-time hire of Richard Clint Reagan as a CDL truck driver for shift, replacing Luke Chilson for Portage County Solid Waste Management District. Anticipated start date is April 6, 2020. The board of commissioners agreed that this hire is contingent upon the applicant passing the required pre-employment testimony.
Bill, do you have a revolving door out there?
No. What's happened is we've just had some people leave and there's not a lot I can do about that. I mean, we've had a couple retirements.
Okay.
People just find other employment.
Are we doing exit interviews to track?
HR.
Just to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that the board of commissioners agreed to authorize the full-time hire of Richard Clint Reagan as CDL truck driver for shift, replacing Luke Chilson.
It's already been like, Becky, your name just said it.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
Okay, discussion item. With the current pandemic, I'm sure that, well, I've received a few email requests as to what we're doing. So what I would like to do is send out this email today. And basically, I think moving forward from this point forward, that your direction on these public hearings should be transmitted to me. And then I will send out your, your direction from my office. I think this just, you know, I will email every mayor of every city, village, and then the president of each township, whoever that is, for 2020, and then do a read receipt to make sure that everyone's getting this email. But I just want to keep it short, sweet, and not a lot of fluff to add any confusion on what we're doing.
I think it looks good.
Yeah, because for some reason, the other notices did not go out, I guess. Because I had some confusion. I had residents calling me.
I had, I had one go out and then I kind of got preempted on the other one. That's why from now on, I would, I want them to know that while they may get other emails, the board's direction will come through me. So that way, when they see the email, this is, this is the direction the board is going to take. So that's, I think that's just a good way to move forward, in that way.
Yeah, and, and you know what? I like that you are going to have receipts for the emails. It will go out.
It, and this, this will go out shortly upon my return to the office.
Okay.
With that, I'm done. Have a good day, everybody.
Motion to adjourn solid waste.
Second, roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
All right, we can do our roll call. Thanks, Bill.
You have your day, buddy.
You too. Sue and Alana.
I'll wait for Sue to leave and then I'll come. Six feet away.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good. How are you? Hopefully?
Healthy. Doing well.
Doing well.
All right, my first agenda item, I just wanted to note that we have had a change to the fund. And I think it was sent up, Kelly Jo sent it up, but it didn't make it to the agenda. So the resolution, the first resolution for our children, our child welfare special levy fund, 1415 to transfer is not to Public Assistance. It's going to the Family and Children First Council. So it's Fund 8800.
But the correction has been sent up.
Yes, yes, Kelly Jo sent it up. I think it just didn't go to the agenda, is all of this. It's, it is in our resolution. Yeah, yeah. So this is the part of the multi-systemic youth, multi-system youth funds. We were granted a new allocation and we were granted a new allocation from the state in the state budget. And then I circled number A down there. This is the Ohio Administrative Code. It just says that we're to designate a minimum of 5% to the Family, Children, and First Council. And we have to do it by March 31st, or they'll take it back from us. So that's what this, 12,42245 is 5% of our total allocation of the 248449.
Move to transfer from child, from Fund 1415 Child Welfare Special Levy Fund to Fund 8800 Family and Children First Council.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next one is our, your portion of our 4D contract payments that were made in the month of February for domestic court, juvenile court, and clerical courts in the amount of 890392. So that's that, 34%.
Move to transfer from Fund 0001 General Fund to Fund 1414 Child Support Administration.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And then we have a late add-on. Due to the COVID virus, we've been given emergency funds to, through our PRC plan. So we are updating our PRC plan to include emergency assisted, assistance for the COVID-19. It provides a one-time cash assistance payment to families who've suffered a loss of income due to the pandemic. We are looking at $300 per eligible family. So those would be people that have had a wage loss and were not eligible for unemployment.
So like self-employed people or people that maybe didn't have quarters in or?
Right, right. Just anybody that's not eligible for unemployment and has been impacted, so it's going to be.
Did they change the thresholds? Like, I think I saw it was like 200%.
It's still 200.
Yeah, they, they're talking about it, I think, but I don't think nothing's coming.
Yeah, because I thought I saw that yesterday in an article from Mike Dwyane that came out.
Yeah.
If it does, we'll modify again and get it up here fast track because that would allow more people to apply. And that also is when, as funds last, because our allocation is only going to be about 100 and what?
120, so 120,000.
So that's not a ton of families, but we'll use it until the funds run out.
And everyone's doing everything through the phone lines and online. Because I saw there was a memo, I think he sent out that, because the OMJ center is closed down, so.
Everything online, but they can still come to the second floor lobby in an emergency. So say they don't understand or there's a problem doing it online. It'll be all posted on our website today.
Okay.
And then if they, for whatever reason, have a, you know, crisis with the internet, they can look into it and we'll help them.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
And she had David Shea, who's the president of the community, the community, what they call Planning Committee. He sent out to everybody on the community planning committee for approval of this. And everything that I saw were guesses.
They voted yes.
Okay.
Do we have a copy of that?
I don't, did you? I didn't make copies. Did you get them?
I sent it up.
Oh, there you go. And then the, the changes are highlighted. Yeah, so if you go back to page 10, it's where we added.
Okay, I had that question. Were they highlighted? Because I kind of flipped through it and I didn't see anything highlighted.
It should be unless it didn't get current even color.
Oh, it is highlighted. It is. Thank you.
No.
Yes.
There was a resolution, right, Sue? I gave you a resolution.
Yep, there's a resolution.
I move to approve the revised prevention, retention, and contingency plan effective March 17, 2020 for Portage County Job and Family Services.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I just did five, two updates and then I'll get out of here too. I'm not going to sit near you.
We had a conference call with Ohio Department of Job and Family Services yesterday, their IT division. And they are, the state has given blessings for JFS employees to take non-mobile computers home with them. So that's state issued, state.
Desktops.
Desktops. Desktops. We don't have the tokens at this point to actually function those the way that we need to, but they're working in a fast-track mode to get those. So while we've transitioned, two-thirds of our employment are staff home and they're working in some capacity. Probably in the next week, we'll be having those that don't have their own desktop computers at home. We'll be having them pick up their actual equipment here and taking them home. So the state is really, Ohio Department of Job and Family Services state is really on a fast track to get us more mobile than anything else. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. I'll keep the, I'll keep you updated on the numbers as we transition people home from here. We'll only be doing that as equipment becomes available and we'll be getting the equipment to the people that are home now. People that are home now are working in some capacity. It's just not 100% capacity. But it's happening as we speak. So I just wanted to update you, but I'll email you all with numbers as we transition.
So Kelly Jo, are you following our policy then for people that they're trying to end their actual hours and then anything short of doing the administrative or how are you doing?
We're doing all paid right now because they are working in some capacity. They're all required to check in every morning and get work assignments.
Okay.
So some of them are duties as assigned, but no one is actually sitting and not doing anything. So we're right now still paying without a pay deadline.
Okay.
And, and it looks like it's all going to happen quickly because we had some information that it was happening fast. So that's why we shifted that.
So you're going to be transitioning also the 60 core people from here to their homes now?
Unless, if, if the building stays open, they'll have this building, they'll have to be a handful of people for our lobby. I wouldn't want to completely not be accessible to the public. Now, if you all made a decision to shut this building down, then we would all 100% be at home.
Kelly Jo, can you talk us through the impact of the building or to shut down? How that would be handled?
It really, like, our child welfare workers right now can all work from home. They all have the capability. So adult protective services and child protective services is perfectly fine at this current juncture. They'll be responding to those cases via the hotline and going out in the field. They have to go out in the field. And then our workers are still touching base with their kids and families, so they're fine. It's the homeless individuals, those that need emergency food stamps, that might not have a cell phone or an internet option, that might frequent the library or other places. So that would be, and it's not a lot of individuals, but there's still a group of individuals out there that don't have that access. So I, I would say that would be a handful, but the rest of the divisions can fully function that. I'm going to speak to you next and Sue. So it would be nice as we do the EMA community planning meetings to keep that centered. Because if indeed the building has to close, I think the community partners can decide where will we triage those people. So we can still make sure that we wrap services around them more from a community than just JFS. So we had our first call yesterday, and so we're going to have another one Friday. So if you did shut down, we would just need to find a community point where those individuals can still be serviced. And we have laptops and those things, so. I don't know if that answered your question.
It does. And you would work with that existing group to figure out what the point of contact would be for those individuals.
Right. We built already, I called the convene the meeting last week with all of our food pantries in Portage, and we had a really nice turnout. And right now, we're sharing information on food distribution in the community. So I would want to include that group. Mark Purzon from Family and Community Services is in the same E6 category as me, as job and family. So absolutely, we would, we would build that and we would share with you if you needed to shut the building down, what it would look like and make it publicly known to the press as well.
And what's the point with Sue with that?
So Sue, we inquired yesterday. I had Sue call the auditor's office yesterday because we still are going to receive allocation and need to pay our bills. And so Sue does not have, if, if Sue were to go home, she needs access to Munis, which is the county fiscal system. And so she had called up to the auditor's office and there's some special.
They said that, they said that there's the ability to work from home, but right now, the policy states that you have to have a county, you have to have a county system at home before you're allowed to work on it.
Equipment.
So I have a couple of issues. One is, you know, our invoices come in by mail. So if the county shuts down the building, there's no one here to get the mail or process the mail to bring the invoices in so that we can pay them. The other issue.
However, let me interrupt you.
Go ahead.
There's always a way that we can interface with those individuals and ask them to start emailing and scanning. So we can still address that. It would just be through a communication.
Yeah, and it would just be, they would probably have to complain first that they haven't gotten an invoice and then, you know what I mean? And I would add to that, I'll interrupt on top of that interruption and say that I, I believe when we talk about closing the building and EMA has kind of given some guidance here too, but we would be closing the building to the public, but essential staff could still access the building. And I believe some of those activities, and it wouldn't require you to be onsite, you know, it could be check the mail once or whatever you guys determine.
Like, yesterday, and she said there's no way they could not get the mail and process the mail. We, we haven't. She's, I think, on her agenda today. I'm sure I'll ask her to.
So processing invoices through the auditor's office too. You know, right now, we have to present them with paper copies. So I didn't know if there, if we would still, you know, if there's just a lot of unfinished questions.
Yeah. I do want to ask you, are you hearing any issues or concern with children? I know a lot of the schools have worked together to still provide like breakfast and lunches for kids. You haven't heard?
His, his name is Russ Bennett. He works, so we've been in contact with him. And as the schools are developing food distribution plans, they're, they're sharing with us, but we're hearing that that's been taken care of. But we still have, we bought some food supplies very little in the emergency situations, and the food pantries definitely have a supply right now. The Akron Canton Food Bank also contacted me last week and said they're available. Of course, we would need to fund them, but we do still have some tandem funds if we needed to actually purchase food to help the food banks to get to the kids and to the families. But I think the school systems, based what Russ had indicated, is they're all planning and
Taking care of it.
And taking care of it.
I know, I'm working with Home Instead that services seniors. Right now, they're looking to do door-to-door service for taking prescriptions to the seniors so the seniors aren't out. They originally wanted to do both groceries and medications, but it seems like there's other agencies sort of helping with that. So right now, their primary focus is for seniors that shouldn't or can't get out to get to the pharmacy. They will have their staff who's bonded and insured taking the medicine. They'll leave it. The seniors still pay for it. They just won't pay for the delivery or pickup service?
I think your point of contact that they mentioned.
Yes.
They sent information to Kim yesterday and she included them on our sheet. We put that, there's a blue sheet on our Facebook and our webpage that gives that information on food availability in the community. So, sorry.
Go ahead.
So those are the, I'm sorry. I'm not going to touch your table. I'm not, that's why I don't follow the rules. Those are the two updates. I will keep you updated on our system conversion. It's happening now. And as the numbers change physically here, I'll let you know. And then we wanted, I'm going to choke now.
We wanted to bring up Sue's issue.
Okay. Yeah. And I don't know, are you in touch with someone at the Salvation Army? Because they actually stopped in yesterday, Kathy Mary did.
I'm choking.
That's okay.
Go get a drink.
Here, I'll talk to you.
You go.
I, Kathy Mary actually came in yesterday to say that, you know, they are also working on having people deliver groceries to people that in need that maybe can't or shouldn't be out. She said that she's got like 4,000 pounds of groceries that are being put out through Ravenna. And then they were getting a delivery for like, I think she said 5,000 pounds up in Wyndham to go out.
Yeah, we put, I don't know if Kelly Jo told you guys, we put, we made bags for our APS clients, our adult protective services clients. So they bought soup and things like that and made bags so that if our workers go out to a call and they see that someone is a little bit on food, they'll give them one of the bags, so.
Oh, good.
The Salvation Army is at the round tables that we've been having. So their information is in the file.
Yeah, okay. Mary stopped in yesterday just to make a point and see if there was anything else. Everyone's coming here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, Ty. We're ready for you.
We sprayed the chairs.
The board of commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 19, 2020 bills, ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the board of commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designated name.
I'll second.
Nothing out of ordinary on the bill run for the bill payments. There was a late fee of 798. That was one fee though. It wasn't out of the ordinary. And the ACH, that's our credit card process. So those are one of these there.
Okay. And then and now seem to be reducing. Did you ever send out that memo?
It did not go out. They're, they're holding steady. The problems aren't as bad. I'm trying to force a very thing, so.
Roll call, Amy.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Move that the board of commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 19, 2020 wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the board of commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management. and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designated.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty, general vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designated.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty, then and now certification as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designated.
I have a second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I do have a change to the general fund.
Oh, you added something?
Yeah, that's in a forty thousand, um, the bill for the sheriff's cars came in.
Oh.
Um, we ordered, uh, five of the Tahos plus the parts, and then, um, there's, there's another fifty thousand in there for additional maintenance, um, for what it looks like it'll be for the rest of the year. Um, the, otherwise the prosecutor, that is the email regarding the recording needing updated to the Windows ten, I can't remember what recording it is, but that will be the prosecutor. Now, I think for the requirement of the Windows ten requirement.
Okay.
I'm going to give it to the general fund, twenty twenty annual appropriation resolution number nineteen dash zero nine four seven, adopted December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
This is a, this is a, just typical movement, it's the big one on the last page is the engineer's office. Um, twelve, twelve oh one is the tag, gas tax fund, and then he has to transfer that to his project funds. Um, so that's what that big one, otherwise the front page is just adjustments to current programs to, to, um, support existing expenditures, there's nothing new out of the ordinary in that.
Todd, do you know, on average annually, what he's receiving from that permissive use tax for the license rate?
Hmm, I can't remember off the top of my head, but let me, I will hit that to you, so.
I'd be interested. I know what we stated when it was first enacted, but.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the non-general fund twenty twenty annual appropriation resolution number nineteen dash zero nine four eight, adopted December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yeah.
And then I have an add-on general entry, um, I apologize, I put it in my plan and then forgot to have Julie put it on the agenda. This would, um, have you suspending late fees for the sewer water and recycling payments. Um, actually, this is sewer water because we don't charge late to recycling. Um, I'm proposing to do it from now through April thirtieth.
Okay.
Um, in part because again, with the phones and the taking payments and all that type of stuff, if we suspend the late fees, it will ease a lot of people's minds.
So Todd, what exactly is your plan right now with your staff? Can you update us on what measures you've taken?
So I do need to ask you, um, it is not currently county policy, but I would like to ask if Erica, who is a temp, part-time, if she can work from home. Um, Joan is already working from home. Um, Joan, Joanne and Lloyd, yesterday, from twenty units. Um, they're smart pro, kind of like tablets, but they come with a keyboard. Um, we are having those overnighted, they should be here today. Um, so we have twenty units that county employees could begin VPNing from home on. Joan will have one of those. Um, and once she gets that, she, she will actually be able to do a great deal of her work from home. Um, Erica, I would like to have her work from home, manning the phones. And basically, um, we would let every call go to message, and then she would process the messages. And we're leaving, um, we've changed our message to indicate that, um, again, we're going to waive the late fees, we're ready to do that if you guys approve this. Um, now we're going to waive the late fees, that service won't be discontinued. For general building inquiry, can people please wait until I have vertical people fit? Um, for change of address, that type of stuff, please leave a message. And then we're going to have Erica processing those, she can do that from home. Um, and so right now, that would allow those two to work from home and to get a great deal of work done.
Will we be giving her like a county phone, or is she going to be asked to use her personal?
Personal phone. Again, um, we're changing the message, so I'm hoping a lot of the messages will, um, include all the information. And, and so she would only be returning calls to those people who didn't leave adequate information. Um, and again, she could use the pound, you know, six, seven, whatever is the block. Um, the, the message itself is going to tell people we aren't responding. If people call with an account balance, we are going to call there. Um, the message says we aren't going to, that they can call back later, um, so those messages.
What do you mean with account balance?
Like, if someone just wants to know what they're currently going to do as account balance, um, that can wait.
The reason I ask is because, you know, title companies will be calling in to get.
They'll be able to get it processed, if they have a very specific message, or type of companies and what they believe for us.
Yeah.
So those, those are what we're processing, is new customers, final bills for leaving and title company final bill requests.
And what about tap-in fees, if someone wants to come?
We have a different mechanism for fees and how they're going to be paid, um, and we've worked with John Evans on that.
Okay, good.
So that, that's all going to be done.
I know you were working on that yesterday, so, okay. And then you're not taking payments up here, you're gonna, did you talk to Joanne about?
She's looking for something to have maintenance put on it. Um, one of our fears, if we just take it or something, you know, somebody's going to steal it. Just, just because they can, even if it's the kids at night riding their bikes through here. So she's looking for something that they can kind of screw onto that, um, Dropbox. Most of the people who use the Dropbox come prepared, and we do have envelopes here, but they'll need for those that don't, but we will get something to attach to that.
Were you able to get a notice on fares?
I haven't yet, I haven't yet.
If at all possible, because the only notice we had yesterday was up here on the counter, and if, if there's any ways, and there's still a chance that people weren't going to see it and come up here, but at least we can say, well, we must have missed it.
So.
Todd, should we say on this general entry, your requesting authorizes the temporary suspension and maybe delete the end date for now?
My thought, because of audit and what they always check for, I would prefer to have the date, and then we can amend that.
Advise it.
And then we would at least have that.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Knowing what the auditors look for, next year's audit is going to look back on to this, and it will be cleaner for us to have the specific dates, and then come that week of April twenty-sixth, or whatever that is, if we need to, we could have that amended yet again. Um, and that would be a clearer trail for the auditors to follow.
Okay, that makes sense, that's right.
But I think you should put temporary suspension.
Well, it isn't temporary, I mean, it's, it's through these dates, I guess.
So you don't think we need to?
Yeah, no, I don't want to confuse you, you are suspending late fees, it's not.
Yeah.
You're suspending all late fees, we will not be processing late fees through those dates. Regardless of the reason, we have some people who are just chronic late payers that are going to get a break.
I'm going to pay my money.
I move that the Board of Commissioners authorizes the suspension of late fees on all sewer and water accounts starting March nineteenth, from twenty through April thirtieth, twenty twenty.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Then I did want to bring your attention, I mentioned that we did find the twenty units, and are having them overnight. Um, part of that, we are paying a little bit of a premium compared to what we were, had ordered it through our normal four-week channel. Um, it currently fits within the scope, we'll recall the board to approve almost six hundred thousand dollars for computer replacements. The items that we're getting, the idea now, for example, Joan, she will receive one of these to take home and work from home. When this is over, she will return that, and then that will be reprocessed for one of the replacements that's, was supposed to have been replaced anyways, a go-to employee, so we're not purchasing extra equipment. In that regard, we're, it's only the difference of the premium, does that make sense? In other words, it's not the full purchase, it's just the difference.
Do you know what the amount is?
It will probably end up being around six thousand dollars when all's said and done. Um, but in the future, we're going to try and save elsewhere, so it might not be within that. I just wanted to give you the heads up, that's, not the one we made that purchase.
What is your staffing arrangements for your staff right now?
That's, so if, if, and that's the next thing I need you to answer, but if Erica can work from home, both my staff members will be from home.
And what about you, because?
My intention as of right now is to be here, and the best recommendation I can make to you is to have Joanne and I here, um, at least, and let us sort out, um, getting work to people who are at home. Uh, the more people you get home, the less danger we're in when we're here. Um, I understand the board hasn't a desire to get me at home, and I, I can't do just my budget director duties, if that is all you want to accomplish, but, um, I think for the sanity of people having to deal with oddball things that are going to come up, um, having Joanne and I here to be able to brainstorm and come up with solutions, it's easier for us to do that in the building where we have the paper files, you know, those are the things you can't replicate from home, um, those type of things. Um, so I would encourage you to do that, but it would suck.
But the only problem I have with that is, is Todd, if you go down, there's no backup for you.
Yes.
And.
If I die, I don't care about your problems. If I don't die, um, I, I am in a place, I have kept up with my work, um, to where, you know, if I had to take two weeks, um, I would still be contacted by phone, and I still have VPN, short of not being able to move, I would still be able to do my work from home.
Because I know we expressed to you yesterday, we would like to try to have you at home as much as possible, like in a bubble suit if possible.
Yeah. No, I'm not as worried about the county's position if I were to get sick, because I know that I can do a lot, even while I'm sick, again, short of being on my deathbed, in which case, your issue is no longer mine.
Got problems.
I do know that if I'm home even healthy, there are just little things that, that I could help more by being here than at home. And right now, with all the other confusion, I think staff, including other elected officials, would appreciate that stability of having Joan and I, again, sometimes face-to-face as even.
You mean Joanne?
Uh, Joanne, yeah, that is it, yeah.
Have you talked to Joanne about that?
We have, we have, and, and she, it's her full intention to stay and be the one that's here and sort the staff. Um, again, it's up to the board, but that would be my recommendation to us to leave us. But in order to help protect us, get rid of as many others as you can.
You know, I'm thinking that maybe Julie and Amy could alternate.
Yeah.
How does that sound? I mean, I mean, Amy would be here if we need her for a meeting or something, which I don't think we're going to be doing that, but that way.
Yeah, and the other thing though is.
Not to butt into some, it's not my department, but my recommendation is get people home.
Okay, that's what I think.
And let Joanne, myself, and Janet coordinate who we need to come in at various times, and what we need them to do.
Mm-hmm.
And it may be that we need Amy, but we can tell her, Amy, we need you Tuesday, and we want you to come here, and, and that type of stuff. Otherwise, we can be emailing and keeping in contact. Um, again, Amy can do a great deal of her work from home.
She's, she has the VPN.
She's got the VPN, um, and that's a huge thing, if, whatever work you can do at a computer, you can do a VPN. And she can print stuff, and it prints to here, it's not like she has to deliver it from home.
No, I, I understand that.
I know, like Susan was talking about, the auditor needs paperwork. Well, the key is, you could have a lot of people processing from home, and one person picking up the paperwork and delivering it. Um, that would be my intention, is to use more and more of those features. Um, you need someone to centrally coordinate that across the various work entities. And again, I think Joanne and I are in the best position, um, just because we know, you know, everybody contacts us anyways, so we're, it's easy for us to come to.
Well, I know some of the concerns though is, like, getting the board packets together. I know Julie expressed that she would still like to be able to come in one day. And as long as Julie and Amy are not here on the same day, we should be okay. And at least get the board packets together and let, you know, I know you said something about.
Can I ask you guys, I, I worry, because we're going to have the engineer coming in, we're getting backlogged. I think this is very good input. Bring this discussion up again at the end of the meeting, um, with this input. And Todd, we may ask you to come back in.
Yeah, and get Joanne, and me too.
But thank you, this is helpful.
Oh, I didn't get a clearance or anything, um, are you okay with Erica working from home, doing phones? Understanding that she isn't going to be working every minute of the day, but having her there is a big help to myself and Joan.
Yes.
And as long as she's okay with her personal?
I've asked her that, and she is, yeah.
And Todd, remember the star six, seven?
Yes, I do, I, that's, I, we're going to describe everything that she should, that's part of why I had her.
Get behind the flags over there, Todd. Okay, so.
Can I resource the way, I'm a rep.
I'm really tired of that. Janet?
I thought I was after, after bill, so then the list would change or something.
I think you guys have executive sessions, why don't call me back when we do.
Oh, no, we're, we're just on my journal, which is right now.
No, we do, we have one at.
I think Joanne, I'll come back for the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for my, for my, we just have seven challenges.
Okay. We have the replace ones, right?
You gave us that replace list yesterday?
Yes.
Do you have that?
I didn't like the word.
So the one that we had before, you want to replace it with this one?
Yeah, it's one word change, that, that's how.
The board, uh, move that the Board of Commissioners agree to accept the promotion of Stephanie Winrich from temporary PCSA supervisor to PCSA supervisor, replacing Scott Geno- Oh, from temporary to, okay, permanent, I see, replacing Scott Genova, is that how it is?
Yeah.
Okay, for Portage County Job and Family Services effective March twenty-three, twenty twenty.
Uh-huh, may I get a second? Um, just for this one, the department interviewed three applicants, and thought Stephanie was the most qualified.
Great.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agree to authorize the three-day internal posting of the full-time temporary PCSA supervisor, replacing Stephanie Winrich for Portage County Job and Family Services with external posting if no internal appointment is made.
Second?
It's just the role of posting to put into, normally Stephanie.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agree to authorize the full-time hire of Nicholas Cork as a social service worker two, replacing a position previously held by Daniel Tuttle for Portage County Job and Family Services, anticipated start date is April twenty, twenty twenty. The Board of Commissioners agree that this hire is contingent upon the applicant passing the required pre-employment testing.
Okay, second?
And with this one, the department also interviewed three applicants, and thought Nicholas was the most qualified.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agree to authorize the creation of the part-time quality assurance office, officer position in the Portage County Job and Family Services, and approve the respective job description.
Second?
And this one, with this was a part-time position, that was a result of the full-time quality assurance officer that was abolished due to the efficiency of operations at JFS. And that part-time position was created.
Oh, okay.
Great. Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners authorize a professional development wage increase for Matthew DeWalt, engineering technician one, for Portage County Water Resources, effective March twenty-three, twenty twenty, for completing the required task for promotion. This qualifies him for the engineering technician two title.
Second?
And with this one, the employment qualifications according to the contract and professional development.
Okay.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners authorize a professional development wage increase for John Sturm, engineering technician one, for Portage County Water Resources, effective March twenty-three, twenty twenty, for completing the OSHA thirty certification and obtaining his class one water certification.
Okay.
Second?
And with this one, the qualifications according to the contract.
Okay. Amy, I second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agree to authorize the promotion of Vincent Salzman, maintenance two to maintenance three for Portage County Internal Services, effective March thirty, twenty twenty.
Second?
And if you remember, this was based on the conversation with Joan, tell them that.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yeah.
We already did that sound voice.
Yeah, I can do it there. All right, let's turn this one to you.
Thanks, Janet. Well, I think I'm still here.
Yeah. Oh, wait a minute, I think Joanne will be here.
So I'm waiting for Joanne, how, how are you doing your staff, Janet, just so we know?
it should be just one day that we're going to be rotating, checking the fax machine, checking our mail. But they're, they're starting today, they're, they're working from home. Like for Susan, all her employee files are in her, in her office. So she needs to see a physical file, she's going to have to come in.
Yeah.
We did talk about boxing up her employee files.
Johnny will spot for you.
Or right now, we're trying to keep her up there.
All right, good morning.
Okay.
Hello. What's the reason I know Joanne should get employment on that question?
Um, this would be employment for termination possible. That's why Chris is here from last week.
So which one?
Want to say termination or employment?
For the discipline of an employee.
This one, there you go. So I'm going to go into executive session for G1, the discipline of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call, Amy.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
And we will leave the room, go to the conference room, and return when executive session is over.
Okay. It's okay. All right. Okay, Amy. I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay.
I think people are watching so they know when to come in, just so you know.
Okay. Moving on to my resolutions, we have just a second. Do you remember now that we're back on?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, perfect, okay. Yep, go ahead, Joanne.
No problem. The first resolution is a company that Mickey did request for qualifications for last year, and now they need to replace a bridge. And this is the, one of the companies that responded to the request for qualifications to replace the, the bridge on Johnson Road. And he would like to go into contract with having them put together design services to do such.
Okay. Move that the board of commissioners accept the proposal of MS Consultants, Inc., and enters into an agreement for providing professional design services for the Johnson Road Bridge replacement, Bridge 107 over Fish Creek from Franklin Township, Portage County.
Second. Roll call, Amy. Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Okay, then the second one is during that same time period when he requested proposals, he was now looking for a company that can do bridge inspection, ratings, and things like that for our bridges in the county. And he's chosen Osborne Engineering to do that on eight of our bridges in the county this year.
Move that the board of commissioners accept the proposals, Osborne Engineering, and enter into an agreement for providing professional engineering services to perform bridge load ratings of eight Portage County bridge structures.
Second. Roll call, Amy. Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
And the very last one is to renew the real estate lease with Sandy Notech, who has the bar that we own on Main Street in Ravenna. The reason why it's so late is because her attorney had some issues with wording, and I straightened those out with him and got that taken care of, as she requested some parking spaces, and I think we were able to accommodate at least one order in one of our lots. So she, she's happy, she signed it, and we're on our way.
Move that the board of commissioners agrees to enter into a real estate lease agreement with Sandy Notech, 106 East Main Street, Ravenna.
Second. Roll call, Amy. Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
And I think I'm in here for the next session with Todd and Damon. Todd is there in a minute, and I will go.
What is the current thing? Changes every second anyway. You know, in my law dreams, I've been thinking, is this kind of like when the depression era started, you know, we can't, you know, we're like weighed about for me and this and that, and then now this just seems to keep going all around the country, you know, all of our states now.
Oh, cool.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It's an unreal today.
Yeah.
All right.
Are you afraid to come on Twitter?
Hey, we're social distancing.
I think I just want to say a few words to end off this discussion.
Sure. Well, I guess, yeah, last week we presented the job description, and then a possible posting related to the schedule that was provided as well. I think maybe the first thing to talk about is whether you're satisfied with the job description, whether we approve, and then whether or not you're satisfied with the schedule on posting, or whether you'd like to, you know, delay it, or whatever you'd like us to do with it.
And Todd, you did check this with your higher revise code as to what...
Those are the bullet points. Yeah, we compared it to, that you can, you can start counting, I had one other, and those are the duties. Obviously, you could add if you want, I didn't necessarily take away. You, you will need to appoint this person via resolution, and in that resolution, you could do the last probably six of these or if you want to. So at that point, you could simply not assign those duties if you wanted to, but I would leave them in the job description.
Can you talk about the posting is, we want, the posting is directors only? Does that need to be in the job description as well?
It is under current...
It is under new job standards, I want to. So new job standards.
Must be, okay.
And then, what posting and closing dates?
We left that blank pending the schedule. If you look on the schedule...
It says March 20.
The 20th to the 1st, that basically fits Vicky's absence next week.
Next week? Oops.
Next, or is it you?
Yeah, I'll be here.
So we could modify that schedule if you wanted to. I mean, the rally is if you're directors, and they're only turning in the letters when they're interested, so partly we had extended that time because originally one of you was out one week and one of you was out that first week in April or whatever, and so this schedule kind of worked around that. If that's not the case, we could compress it back down.
Right, let's do it.
In fact, originally, we had said, you know, if you posted it today and got the letters in, you could actually schedule interviews during the Tuesday session if you're still holding it, which might be nice, the interviews can be done in an executive session, and that would keep that out of your...
I probably have a Tuesday session next week.
It is tight, yeah.
I probably have the...
Yeah.
It's too tight. There was a question that Amy had, are we going to have the Tuesday sessions? Have the extra meeting?
I think that we should keep the Tuesday session on the calendar for other decisions.
So we could leave it at that.
Okay.
What was a bunch of project...
It depends, some directors, they may be in or out of the office, I mean, they may not see it, or...
You can tell you have the timeframe, do whatever you want.
Yeah.
I wouldn't see you guys...
Okay.
A week, yeah, two weeks, we have it.
I'm fine with April 1st, I mean, we get it out tomorrow, get some time.
I wouldn't want to probably do it, especially with how busy you guys are right now.
And it morphs every day.
Right, that's...
So what do you need from us today, then?
I think you would need to approve the job description for sure, and there would be a journal entry for the posting, I suppose, up in the...
And I drafted as a document, you know, that I had this...
Well, I didn't say that.
The job description and the posting. I did have one question for you, do you want the letters to go to Amy in the court for the board pressures, or do you want them to come to HR? I just put Amy there just to replace order, the how to apply.
They usually go to HR.
HR, yeah.
That's a key bit.
Key bit, HR.
Yeah, Amy's got enough going on right now, so.
Amy, so on March 20 for April 1st.
Do you have a...
Do you have that studied? Do we have that?
I have a study.
I have a copy for you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, move that the board of commissioners agree to authorize the creation of the county administrator's supplemental position.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky. Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Oh, were you... Is this scheduled, do you want to add the Tuesday? We can talk about that later within the schedule.
What do you mean?
Let's talk about that later.
Talk about that later.
Yeah.
One of the goals was whether you wanted to interview on Thursdays with everything else that you do on Thursdays, or whether you wanted to add a meeting, since you're not using Tuesday, you already have schedule, add a meeting within there that you could just do the interviews, and it'll depend on the number of directors, maybe wait for that to see whether you need to add one or two, whatever it is maybe.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Oh, were you? Is this scheduled, do you want to add the Tuesday? We can talk about that later within the schedule.
What do you mean?
Let's talk about that later.
Talk about that later. One of the goals was whether you wanted to interview on Thursdays with everything else that you do on Thursdays or whether you wanted to add a meeting since you're not using Tuesday already have schedule. Add a meeting within there that you could just do the interviews and depend on the number of directors and wait for that to see whether you need to add one or two. Whatever it was maybe.
Yeah, I can have me kind of kind of wait until it happens.
Yeah, that would just keep it out of the.
Right.
Today would be a hard day to interview and eventually cognizantly.
Thank you though. Thank you guys. Thank you for your work on that.
And Julian, are you going to be available later on? We talked about at the end of our meeting today, having your five come back to talk about staffing.
Sure.
I'm, I guess, you tell me. Is this after the county engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can call down to you, Julian. That's fine. All right, thanks.
Thanks.
You need to go into executive session for what?
Employment. So I'll move to go into executive session for P1, employment of a public employee.
I will second.
Roll call Amy, Catherine?
Yes.
Green?
Yep.
Vicki?
Yes.
Okay, we will, again, let's go on to the conference room.
Okay, the engineer, next.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
I'll second.
Alex Breina?
Yes.
Sorry, roll call Amy.
Kathleen.
Wait, let me start that over. So, roll call Amy.
Sabrina.
Yes, Kathleen.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just thought it was the final slide.
Is there action?
No action.
Yeah. Are we gonna allow the public to comment or public commenting?
No, this is done, public comment.
Come in, Maggie.
How are you?
Hello, hello, everybody.
Come in.
Hi, Maggie.
Mary. You guys can come up here unless you wanna say that. We can't hear. Maggie, you are up.
Um, we have a resolution before the commissioners that is requesting that you accept the completed roads in the Wintergreen subdivision in, uh, Woodstown and consequently turn it over for each remaining responsibility to the township as they are township roads. I would be happy to answer any questions or anything we may have about that if they have been properly built. The work has been completed and we have inspected tens of times at a minimum.
So, the only question I have, have Maggie, is, so the subbracks, as you know, where they're supposed to maintain them a year after they've been turned over, is that provision being left out?
No.
Okay.
We have gone through, uh, to begin with, you know, the, part of the problem is, is that the subdivision regulations are not an expressly complete and thorough document with all the steps enumerated, A, B, C, D, E. The subdivision regulations provide a framework for the completion of the instruction of a subdivision by the various players that are involved. And all of the players that are involved fill in the loopholes or the empty spots and make it happen. That's what we do, that's what Water Resources does, that's what everybody does. Uh, in this particular case, we have, and we have been doing this as a matter of standard practice for years and years and years. Uh, we put these roads, we made a determination, and I gave you the dates, I can read it to you if you want me to, but we made a determination when the roads and the drainage systems were what we call substantially complete, which is a concept that means basically all the, all the bulk work is done and there may be a nominal issue here and there, but the bulk work is done. When that happens, we then document that and we start the one-year maintenance period. In this particular case, all three of these phases that we're asking you to accept went through that one-year period and that was completed, uh, when, I don't know, um,
March, uh, May of eight, uh, nineteen. It was June fifteenth of nineteen.
June fifteenth of nineteen is when all three phases had been gone through the one-year period. And then we started, then we re-involved the township again and asked them to take a look at things. We went out and inspected things with them. They asked us to address a couple of things, which we had Mr. Vassal, the developer, do. Uh, he's been extremely patient with the whole process and, and we then corrected those and then we presented to you at a later date when everything was done and we had determined that we had completed everything, a resolution for acceptance, which we then, uh, sent a cover letter copy to the township trustees as well, which is our standard process. Just to let them know it was coming. Uh, that went out in November or something like that, November, uh?
September twenty-third, yeah.
Okay. Last call. And we've had a lot of conversations since then.
Now, I noticed on the resolution, it says that, um, you're gonna make these Woodstown responsibility effective February sixth, twenty-twenty. Should that not be changed to reflect today?
Uh, the current, that should be the current date.
That we pass it?
That you pass whatever, whenever that occurs. Mr. Vassal has been maintaining them. He has done snow and ice control on them and is, uh, obviously very desirous of being done with it as well.
I move to accept Ivy Trail, Blackberry Lane, and Green Hill in the Wintergreen Point subdivision, Phase Three and Four, in Woodstown Township, Porch County.
Uh, second, roll call Amy.
Katie?
Yes.
Breina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yeah.
Yes.
I thank you very much and I'm sorry to trouble you with everything that happened, but we'll do the best, uh,
in the scheme of things right now, Maggie, this is important.
I appreciate that and I have to agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good day and we'll be in touch.
All right, I think Ryan was here. So, we're gonna suspend public comment. Chris, since you're here, can I just ask if you pulled your motion to suspend or just announce that we're pulling that from the agenda?
Because under that Open Meetings Act, technically, a public has the right to be here under normal circumstances, you know, more than a state of emergency. But even under normal conditions, the public has no statutory right to actually speak during a public meeting. It just means it has to be open to the public. So, that being the case, in normal circumstances, you do not even have to take public comment. I'm not saying you shouldn't, it's a good, good relationship to do that, but by law, the, the Open Meetings Act does not require public comment.
Okay, so we'll just pull that from today's agenda. And then we can move on to the EMA update and Ryan's here early.
Yeah. Ryan, we're ready for you. We appreciate that.
All right, so we have, we're doing afternoon. One hundred miles an hour.
Morning.
Is it morning?
It's still morning.
It's not afternoon for fifteen hours.
It's Thursday, right? I don't know. Okay. So, we have two resolutions. The first one is to declare a local emergency that's aligned with the governor's declaration. And, um, basically, overall, a declaration is just a formality at the local level, it's not really tied to funding. The governor's declaration is, and it's more than that saying, hey, we know we're, we're at our capabilities and we need state assistance. And most of that's in PPE, other than less from regional and state partners. So, I guess we just need approval to declare an emergency.
I move the local emergency proclamation to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Porch County from the effects of coronavirus disease two thousand nineteen.
I will second.
Roll call Amy.
Katie?
Yes.
Breina? Yes, Kathleen?
Yes.
Just real quick, Amy, has that been signed? I don't know, when does the signature actually happen? I'll just need a copy of that soon.
We're gonna sign it.
Okay. And then number two is, uh, so donations management, just to do everything appropriately. Uh, we did recently receive some donations from Woodstown Veterinary Hospital and each time that we receive a donation, because I set a media release to you, probably an hour ago, so uh, we will do a resolution to approve the donations until we can find a better option of, of doing this. So, uh, this is how it'll be. So, the second one is approval to receive donations from Woodstown Veterinary Hospital.
I move to accept a donation in the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for COVID-nineteen response.
I will second. Roll call Amy.
Katie? Yes.
Breina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
That's all I have.
That's all.
Is there, is there any questions about ongoing operations?
Oh. It seems to be going pretty good.
Yeah, it just kind of, I just see.
I just checked the sound, but.
Yeah, yeah, you did. No, we do have some severe weather.
There's still some communication, I mean, within the county, I think, and the different departments, but it's not moving.
I think everybody's, it's the first time, so everybody's kinda, order is, those relationships overlap.
It changes so fast.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I know like the city hand has done some things, and I'm saying, guys, let's not compete. Let's make sure we're not competing, make sure everything funnels through the emergency operations through the EMA. We don't want to compete with each other in different things, every jurisdiction, but, uh, most of the objectives we put in place Wednesday, uh, was, uh, are almost completed already. So, we're just moving forward and that's how we're gonna keep turning. We're just gonna set objectives every Monday from here and just slowly just keep turning away.
And Ryan, we have a conference call tomorrow morning and then you're gonna give us the agenda for next week, huh?
Yes, so I'm working on a meeting schedule for next week when I get back. You'll see some slides. It, it's gonna look strange, so what happened on the conference call is the bandwidth was just overwhelmed on the company side. So, they asked us to move, we don't have another solution yet, they asked us to move to like a nine thirty-five.
Right.
Go to the five minute, no, go to the half an hour. So, you may see like nine thirty-five start and I'm gonna ask everybody to call right in at nine thirty-five. So, go call in early, go ahead and call in a little bit then, so.
Okay.
See you this session.
And then, did you say you just emailed us something?
I emailed the media release for donations management as well as one for family community services for food and volunteers as well as favorite plates. And then we're working on the one right now, what is Porch County's response, as requested on Wednesday.
You know, Ryan, I have a question and again, we're lucky to have the prosecutor here in attendance, but how are we doing on the issue with the open meeting requirement and executive policy?
That's a good question. I haven't had a chance to talk to you really about it. But for Monday, or tomorrow will be our next executive policy meeting. I did say anything that was decision-based, I wouldn't go down that route if I did tell me and, uh, I told them to take it to the board, so I don't know. But how do you wanna do it moving forward?
Let's talk about the void. Would it be possible, could you maybe be here or one commissioner be here and then activate your system and if everybody else calls in, then they could just listen, um, live to what you're doing now? And I think that would fulfill, um, the openness requirement.
It just depends on the meeting. I gotta bounce back and do it ten thirty. So, it goes, it goes eight fifteen to nine thirty, all nine thirty-five to ten fifty-five. So, it's bounces, just bouncing backwards. It's a little bit of an inconvenience coming out, so.
Okay.
But if I gotta get it done, I have to.
But I'll tell you what, if, if even, could Amy just, uh, activate the system here? And could everything be filtered through somehow with the teleconference to include?
Well, I did.
Well, what needs to happen, Chris? The public has to be able to dial in as well.
Well, if you could just have the public have access to what you're doing now, even though they're not gonna see anything because you're not meeting together, but if they can hear the audio, so if, if you're doing your, uh, conference call, is there any way to?
We're gonna follow down the bandwidth though, which is already stretched. What if we do, can we do a broad public meeting notice that this is our meeting schedule? These are the conference calls, you're welcome to come here and listen to the phone call.
We don't wanna encourage public. But I think what Chris is saying could work, so here's what, here's what I'm translating. So, Amy would dial in to the meeting here, place it on speakerphone and we would enable a live stream so that they wouldn't be looking at the meeting, but they would be hearing the meeting. And that's just one extra person. And that's just one extra person dialing in.
Okay.
So the live.
Right there. Yeah.
Didn't see that.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So it's a little clunky, but I think it meets the requirement.
Yes.
And that way you wouldn't have to be here, nobody.
Absolutely, I think that's fantastic. I think we do the live stream.
Okay.
And, uh, that doesn't necessarily guarantee all three of you are gonna be in this group too. So are you planning on all three being here then at nine thirty, each one of these?
No, we will still dial in.
Which is Amy.
Yeah, I will dial in.
Okay. Does that work?
That works.
That's easy for everybody.
And it's, and just so you know, we're not conceding that this actually isn't even necessary. However, um.
Right.
To be an abundance of caution here, if, if, if we could do that process, then I think that would be a good thing.
I think, uh, and as an after action, we will update our emergency plans to do that process every time I come here now. So, okay.
And Ryan, I would announce at the beginning that this is a public meeting. Public access is available via live stream. Get people and start people how to access it, just so, again, abundance of notice.
Okay.
Is a good.
Is the live stream on the county website?
We'll get you.
Okay. Okay, I will make all that happen tomorrow morning.
What's, what's your meeting schedule then? What call-in schedule?
The call-in schedule, please, then, at nine thirty, which will be nine thirty-five tomorrow, so we'll be slightly adjusted.
Okay. So it's the Monday.
And I'm creating a new meeting schedule for the entire week, every Friday. So I have one published for the next week.
So Monday, Wednesday, Friday, about nine thirty-five.
Right, that range, yep.
Okay.
So Chris, he needs to, we need to publish that, not just to your attendees, but that needs to be.
How many hour notice do you have to give?
Twenty-four.
Okay, so if it's on a Friday, that's enough time. I will send you the meeting notice and have a tech-related thing to do out. At least that even tells the public that we have government structures in place responding. And then we'll either increase or decrease depending on the demand of the incident.
One thing, Ryan, I've been getting a lot of questions on is, is closing the building. Uh, we did talk to Kelly Jo this morning, who said that there's a small population that, that doesn't access the building publicly, even under these circumstances. But she felt that they could still be accommodated even if we closed the building. I believe we have, we have other elected office holders we need to consult with.
Absolutely.
But I think that through this process, if we could work on that communication, I think that is the direction we should be looking towards. Especially because it might get orders.
So the Department Director-elect official conference call, do we wanna have that conversation there?
I think that would be a good idea. I do, and, and since it's a public meeting, that's a good place for us to be able to have an efficient discussion about it.
So if there's anything specific, just send it to me, email. I have that one now.
And when we say close to the public, or close, I mean, talking about just close to the public, we'll still have essential staff here. Cause I think that's where everyone's confused, that if we close the building, close the building. So which one are you referencing to?
I'm not referencing anything specific. I'm just saying people are asking questions, so I think we should address it on the agenda. And as I said earlier, I think what we're talking about is closing it to the public, but essential staff would still.
Absolutely.
Uh, have access.
Cause there's still a chance for spread, with the communication spread between staff.
Cause I'm having people call, that's worrying about it, closing, closing. So there's two different components, either closing it to the outside or closing it, closing it, where no one's here. That they're concerned about, so.
We're getting a lot of things, so.
Yeah, and it's good questions, cause who knows?
Absolutely.
It may come to that.
So I'll bring it up, I'll just maybe some.
Hope for the best.
Conversation, of course, so. Okay. I think, I don't know if, did, did Joanne bring up the hand washing station potentially?
No.
I think that goes along with the closing.
You're asking her coming back.
Okay.
And then yesterday, Governor DeWine suggested that any employers take temperatures and stuff.
There's no the water.
I know. I just got a text from the courts and.
And we put a request, animal events, we put a request to universities for the waters too. So that one, the Kent State, NeoMed, and Hyrum.
No one has.
And they went to the North Coast too, and I can't reach out to the North Coast to see if they had anything. You know, it's all closed.
I did order one online though.
I haven't had a response yet from the three, but I did do a mission request today, so.
All right, and thank you so much for what you're doing.
All the local pharmacies are out too.
It's a tough slide, that's for sure.
And we still don't know when the drive-throughs or the testing will be up for U H A, cause. Did they get swabs?
Um, we're still looking for some, that was on my mission request, to use for additional swabs. I know NeoMed called it two days ago, offered swaps, so we just wanna make sure that they're right ones. So, maybe you can tell.
Yeah. It's great news is they created their own test, so that, and they can test it faster, but there's no swab.
And I haven't heard anything about NeoMed opening a testing site, so I, I don't think they should, because we're so limited on resources. It's hard enough to fill the first one, let alone have to devote resources.
Oh, so you don't think NeoMed should do that? I thought they were doing that because people were being turned away.
As long as they have the support from Suma, but we had to devote a lot of resources. I have two assets and a couple of the things devoted right now to the one here. Uh, let alone things they may need in generators, wifi, and other stuff, just to get cones. We have two hundred and twenty cones out from ODOT, so there's a lot more logistics that go into it versus what's going to happen. So, a lot of resources.
And it sounds like NeoMed, I talked to Janet Korn yesterday, um, it sounds like they're still in the planning stages of that. They're not.
I got one call, and I kinda refilled out those logistics and just things to think about.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Have a good weekend if I want, we'll talk.
Right.
See you tomorrow.
Yes.
Call you later.
Yes.
Thanks, Chris, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Stay safe.
So let's do our miscellaneous items, okay? Make a motion to amend the resolution number zero seven, zero six eight five, dated July tenth seventeen. Resolution granting regular annexation.
Wait, where are you at? I'm sorry. Are you on the miscellaneous?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the Board of Commissioners pre-expected minutes.
Oh, you know what? Do you have that? I don't have miscellaneous, one hundred.
Your emails are like fifteen minutes behind, I don't know why. Your emails.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, like you sent it at ten thirty, but I didn't get it till ten forty-seven for the first meeting, and I still haven't got advice from the board.
There seems to be a lag. Um, would you call to, would you?
Yeah.
Make a motion that Board of Commissioners approves the March twelfth, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes and the March sixteenth, special meeting minutes.
I will second. Actually, Vicki, can I ask you to redo the motion? And we don't need to approve the special meeting. Okay, so just approve the March twelfth.
Okay, I didn't have the sixteenth on then.
Make a motion, the Board of Commissioners approves the March twelfth, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into an agreement between the Stantec Consulting Services, Inc., for the Sloughville Township wastewater treatment plant, planning study, project number PC nineteen dash one three oh.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into a performance bond agreement for sanitary sewer improvements for New Milford Road Sewer Extension, Bednerick Project, Porch County Water Resources, project number RV dash zero ten dash seventeen zero dash P.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into a general sewer agreement for sanitary sewer improvements to New Milford Road Sewer Extension, Bednerick, Porch County Water Resources Department, project number RV dash zero nineteen dash one seven zero dash P.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Motion, the Board of Commissioners authorizes the request for installment payments, the connection charges for connection to the sanitary sewer system in the Porch County Regional Sewer District, and establishing the terms and conditions of the same.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Motion, the Board of Commissioners agrees to amend resolution number zero seven dash zero six eight five, dated July tenth, two thousand seven. Resolution granting regular annexation of one point four one nine acres of land from Sloughville Township to the village of Magador. Regular annexation amended to be one point three nine three zero acres of land annexed from Sloughville Township to the village of Magador.
I will second. Can I ask about this, where this came from and, and what our timeline needs to be? I wasn't familiar with this. Do we need to do this today?
No.
I mean, it's been held, but.
It's been held up a while.
I didn't know about it until I read about it on the media and general. We hold off on this and do this at our next meeting, and perhaps have somebody in to review it for us? Who is the?
We can talk to Todd at Regional Planning.
Todd P.
Yeah. Problem is, this annexation was to have happened years ago and the proper plan was never filed, so that's.
Okay.
Hi.
Hello.
So we're holding that one.
Let's hold on that.
Okay, motion, in accordance with the Hyrum Advice Code, section three two five one zero seven, the Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the monthly regular proceedings and transactions for February twenty twenty as presented by the Porch County Sheriff's Department.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Motion, the Board of Commissioners acknowledge the receipt of the Porch County Investment Reconciliation for the month of February twenty twenty, received on March twelfth, twenty twenty, as presented by the county auditor and the county treasurer.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Motion, in accordance with the ORC three one one dash two zero, the Board of Commissioners acknowledge the receipt of the Porch County Sheriff's monthly jail reports for expenditures and food costs for prisoners for December two thousand nineteen and January twenty twenty.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Motion, the Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty certificate of the county auditor that the total appropriations from each fund do not exceed the official estimate resources for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty, as presented by the Porch County Auditor's Office.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the March sixteen, twenty twenty notice from Faith Lyon and Teresa Nielsen, Porch County Board of Elections, indicating that Ohio Secretary of State Office directed them to place an outdoor drive through ballot box in an extension of post-election hours. A board member will maintain watch over the temporary ballot box.
I will second. We'll call Amy Pinky.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Catherine. Yes.
Okay, we're gonna talk about staffing.
I wanna say, I thought about this. And I, I do think you should work from home. I, I think we should be sending as many employees home as we can. And as you've stated, you do have the ability to work from home, you have the access. I think, I think it would be, uh, important for us to keep you as healthy as possible and to have you, uh, working from home. Ryan, I think your situation is different, but, um, and I know you've been working through this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to come up with schedules where I can split staff, so we're all not working together at the same time. Um, but still being able to maintain mail services and, um, the purchase order printing and scanning those things out. The microfilm center, really at this juncture for them, they only need to be able to deliver pull files and deliver them to the courts and to the prosecutor, um, public defender, belt probation sometimes. So I'm, um, working where that's mainly Glenn, but that's where I'm taking Vince and I'm going to have. If Glenn can pull them, because Vince doesn't really know where they're all at in the building, then Vince can deliver so that they're not both being jeopardized, kind of thing, you know? Um, and that's, we're just working that way around. Um, as far as the microfilm itself of records, we're just gonna just suspend that for a while because we've always got records to film, but you can't do that from home, so.
That's a good plan.
Um, I don't think we can have, um, I don't think it's in Ramona's job description number one, but I wouldn't want her lifting, trying to lift boxes off of shelving and things like that to try and get the files cool, so.
Will she be on administrative leave?
Yes, no. That's, that's what we, that's the only thing I could figure to do. Um, plus, you know, like I said, the salary's already allotted for the year, so it's not like I'd have to come back to you guys and say, now we have to pay this, you know, give me the money in the general fund that's taken care of.
What about Shannon?
Shannon? Um, between her and Michelle, I'll be rotating them in the office too, because they, we all can do what we have, you know, we all can back each other up, but I don't want everybody there at the same time, so.
Yeah.
Now, Ryan had a question about hand washing stations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, he sent me the email and I said, well, he originally asked if we could put some in our lobby, and I said, there's no water source there for us to do that. Then he sent me an email where we can get portable ones, and I said, if you want us to have those, we can certainly do that. So, um, I just keep calling, well, on the call yesterday afternoon, you know, all the different agencies that phoned in, he said that he had talked to you guys about doing that, and I said, you just let me know and we'll get one at least if we're gonna put it at the main door, where the public, majority of the public comes in. We get some public out on the Meridian Street side, but they're going to auto title, usually in maybe where the treasurer and maybe, they don't come generally into the rest of the building, but we could put one there as well if, if you wanted to.
These will be leased, right, Joanne?
Yes, they're not, they're not, um, permanent. It's kind of like the Portageons, these are portable water sources like that. And then if you wanted to put one at the, at the entrance kind of area at the courthouse, we can do the same thing. Because I don't think they're, they don't seem to be, they don't have as much public going in there as before, but they still do. At the Riddle Block, um, because Kelly Jo emptied out her floor, the only, we, we checked yesterday, the public defender doesn't have public coming in unless it's by appointment to one of their people. The belt probation is shifting their folks, their employees. Sixteen today and different sixteen tomorrow, and they're trying only to have their people, the people coming in to them with, uh, with, uh, appointments too. But we might as well, if we're gonna get some, put one in that building too, and then anybody that wants to be able to try to keep germs away, keep germs away.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So go ahead and.
We'll get, we'll get three and put them in the main buildings. Um, I'm not, I never am sure about the sheriff, but I can check with them to see if they wanted, but I know that they're trying to curtail all visitation there.
Visitation, yeah.
So he may not need one there.
Maybe check with him.
Okay.
But, yeah. Well, that's.
I was gonna say, it's standing please.
And it might end up being for our employees.
Yeah.
Our building access.
Yeah, and that's why I said, if, if they're down there, they can be used, so, okay.
Um, we wanted to talk about the staff up here.
Yeah.
Um, I believe as long as the building is open to the public, we need somebody at the front desk. How do you guys wanna look at that?
Well, I thought we were gonna alternate, but then you said you didn't want either Amy or Julie here, so I don't know who else.
I think.
I want Judy here. I think, I, it's Judy, I don't want her. I think that, um, we could alternate or we could have one be here, get Amy here, Julie working from home. And if Amy needs to not be here, Julie could come in. It might be easier to do it that way rather than having, uh, every other day, we're changing who's here.
Who's here and who's not. Cause I knew, the only thing Julie said is she would have to come in, she doesn't have a computer at home that's set up with a VPN. Um, she said basically all she can do is get phone calls, and she's concerned because it's going to her personal phone. And even though you can do star six seven, it's still her minutes and stuff. I mean, I have a county phone that I don't really use because my other number was out and it was sort of like useless. I can charge it and give it to her so that she doesn't have to use her personal cell phone. And then it becomes subject to public record if there was, she just was not in favor of that. And then it becomes subject to public record if there was, she just was not in favor of that. You know, subject to public record, is that going to affect your employee that's going to be working from home and using her phone?
So, public record refers to the sending, a call itself would not be, other than the call log.
Okay.
If you send emails on your personal email account, then yes, it opens your entire email up. But to simply make a call, no, it doesn't open up all your phone calls.
But if you are going to reimburse that person.
Yeah.
Then you have to give the detail of your cell phone.
So that's the question. She does not ask for that. It'll be her home phone. I mean, that's, you know, Amy didn't, Julie didn't bring up any of these concerns before, but the county can pay people. The county can begin ordering cell phones and, I mean, we can do whatever we want. My, my only concern...
I was just going to say, we checked the availability of cell phones because I thought, well, let's, let's just see. Because we had one in the courts that they wanted to take those kind of phones home and hope that they were going to work there and I, you know, that, that doesn't work, so... The other possibility is going to be cell phones and right now, our carrier, one of the carriers of contact, it only has like iPhones seven, which is one of the, you know, the older models, but very limited quantity. And he said they're going all the time. So he doesn't know how long he would have any, but we haven't heard from that judge yet to see if they want to pursue it that way or not. So, you know, getting more cell phones or something might not be, we may not be able to. It's hard to say.
What's active is in there still? Oh.
Is it active though? It's not, is, but that, activating one isn't going to be a problem, I'm sure. You know, we can call to have that done, but, yeah. To actually get a new, you know, get another phone might, might be more problematic.
I wonder if we should try to do that with Dubs for your temporary person. I know she probably doesn't think about it. Does she actually have a landline at home or does she, she's in a cell phone?
We sat and talked. I explained to her how to block calls. She had no issue with that. She's delighted to work from home. She brought up no other concerns and so I didn't probe for it. I mean, it's, again, we can do whatever needs done. And if in a week she would bring up an issue, then we would handle that issue at that time.
Is that, are those the phone calls coming in on the wire accounts?
Yeah.
Well, couldn't we just have, transfer that lineup to Jean's area? Because I think he's having more people staff there than have one of them.
Kevin could use, but he can't edit. It's, I, I guess... I don't, so the ex, I don't know what to tell you. It's, we'll do whatever you want.
I think you've worked it out, Todd. I, I don't want it to go to the weeds.
But I, it may not have been brought up, but if it gets brought up, you better have a backup plan if she decides, you know what? I don't think I want to be using my cell phone, so I'm just saying. And at that point, maybe we could just activate Dubs.
Well, at that point, I take the calls and she's no longer needed, but I mean, it's okay. I don't know. It's, I...
Well, there's a worker on that side, I mean...
I, I know there is. To the extent, I've spent time with councils like that, I, again, it's... We got a lot running through our heads besides worrying about whether a person who doesn't want to pay the recycling bill can get through to me. That's the least of my worries. It really is.
And you have a cooperative employee, so I, I think...
Right.
Yes, she could turn on cooperative, but I think let's assume the best and keep doing the work you guys are doing.
I find working from home, our email needs locked somewhere, which they could lock it in the vault. Having one day a week that we come in to scan.
Yeah.
I, I get my concern is just things come up and Joanne and I are who people go to.
Well, Joanne, are you connected there or you, you guys are rotating and...
I'll probably be here every day. I live the closest. So that's, that was all my, my, my thing is I can be here within five minutes. But, and if I have other people going home, I want to be here to answer the doc door if Mike is picking up mail or delivering whatever. And if that's simple, that's not an easy and difficult to do. So for me, and I'm going to be here every day unless God, you know...
Todd, they just won't be able to come to you in person. They will have to call.
It's going to be, it's a change and it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's for your and their good, even if they're frustrated, I think, is how I think we are right now. And let's, let's hope this is temporary.
Yeah. And the, and I guess the bottom line is, is like I said, I'm going to have Ramona, but I, it's going to be week to week. You know, she needs to, you know, if, if things get better, then you're not going to stay up as long and we'll have you come in and do some other things. Or start the microfilming, I guess, backup or something like that, i- if that's what happens. But week to week, we're just going to monitor and see how things change. But it's like, you know, with, with, um, Todd, if you find out that working at home every single day doesn't work, then one day a week or two days a week or something like that, you switch off. That's what I, that's what, we're going to just have to kind of be fluid and be able to just roll with the punches because it's, there's nothing written in stone as to what's going to happen anywhere.
There's no precedent for this.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I say. And we'll, we'll get through it.
We'll work through it.
Oh, yeah. That's what I say, I mean...
So we're saying Amy and Julie are not going to be here, except if needed.
No, no, someone needs to be here. I would think Amy, as our clerk, is the higher ranking and the more essential employee. I think Judy, Julie, Julie should work from home. We can, we should talk with her about the circumstances of that though, because I think we want to make that as workable as possible for her. But we don't need to get into the deep gritty in our meeting. And I think this thing for Judy.
Well, I know that, did you, you talked to the board about those twenty source books that...
We let them know.
That IT is coming, you know, and when Lloyd called me this morning wanting to know, I said, well, they should be here today. I got confirmation on a couple of the things on the order, but not the actual source books. And his intention was going to be able to, you know, they're going to hand them out on temporary basis to department, so maybe you need to have one for Julie to do resolutions or things like that that she can do from home and send in unless Amy's going to do it all, you know, kind of thing. I mean, you guys are just as important as every other elected official on the list. Even though, you know, when it came to replacing PCs and things, we were on the end of the five-year scale. I was like, huh, how did that happen, you know, so...
Figure it.
Yeah, but...
Gave them two extra employees and that's all we get.
So I think...
Sounds like this is a workable kind of...
Solution.
Let me say one other thing looking to next week, which right now we have a meeting scheduled Tuesday and Thursday since the fourth, Tuesday. I would like to move, and I'm seeing other pub, public bodies who are giving this, where the actual members are teleconferencing in and that teleconference, or not tele, video conferencing in. And that video conference is then livestreamed so that we could stream in directors. We could be there. And if there's still the public access via a web stream. We just weren't there for today.
The only concern I have is, is I'm fine with that. And, you know, I voted against today's motion simply because I don't think it was fair to notify the public at the seventh hour. And there's still a rule that you can have ten people in a gathering, so stand there and get into it with Mr. Ames is very unprofessional. I am fine moving forward with the streaming, but I was, it's my understanding though, we still have to make a line available if the public wanted to call. Now, I've heard Chris say today, I know other counties are doing it this way, but they have a line, like to the Commissioner Boardroom, that when it came to public comment, they could call in if they wanted to say something or ask something. But now it's my understanding today that Chris says we don't have to do that. That's what he said. Yeah.
He said it wasn't required. They can attend, but they don't have to speak. It's not required.
But, but, but we're saying that they're not even allowed to attend now, so they're just going to be able to...
No, he said in our minds, they can attend, but they're not required to speak, but we allow that.
Oh, yeah.
And they're also, they are, they are, they do have access. It's through livestream. So they are able to leave the meeting. That meets the open meeting ad requirement in an emergency situation.
Yeah, they just don't have the right for a public comment or if they wanted to say something or ask something.
And they don't have to be granted that under the public open meeting law. So that's a courtesy we provide, which I think we should definitely continue providing when we're out in this emergency situation. And the public can still email. They can still write.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. I know other counties that are going to this, they are still allowing, if we're sitting here and out, when we go to like the video conferencing, that changes it, but like today, they would have been able to call in to ask a question or make a comment, but that's all right. It's not going to matter going forward if we're just doing the video conferencing.
With that phone has a direct dial number two of its own.
Exactly.
So if you ever had felt the need.
To do that.
That would be the line that I would say, but then that line will always be out there, you know what I'm saying? They could give, you could get calls any given time, but if it ever changed with Chris and you needed to have people speak while things are going on, that would be the phone that they should call because that's not something that has to be intended by anybody out front.
Well, the thing on the public comment is we don't even have to have public comment during regular meetings. We do that as a courtesy and I agree we should, in regular meetings, continue to do that. But in this emergency circumstance, unfortunately, I think that it's just difficult to continue to offer.
So is, have you asked Lloyd about getting us set up for video conferencing?
I have and he is working on it. So that, that information will be forthcoming and we may not be able to do it by our next meeting, but I'd like us to work towards having that capability.
Would you, is that something that we would be able to do from our iPads that's coming? I mean...
I, I, we'll have to work out to make sure that we each can do it. I know I have capability to video conference on my personal laptop and on my phone, but we want to make sure we all have the ability to do that before we move in that direction. And I think we should do a sample, like a test meeting, have a director call in too, I mean, before we would move to that.
Can you use your personal computer for that though? Can, would that be okay? I mean, I don't know. Okay. Yeah, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to, but that's why I was asking if our iPads, if not, I have a laptop that does it, but...
One other thing that Ryan brought out in yesterday's meeting was he'd like to see us go down to one entrance and exit here in the building. I guess he spoke about that to you guys?
No.
No, okay. Because I was going to say, some of Kelly Jo's people get here like six forty-five in the morning, so to open the main doors at early... No. What I, what we're going to do is we're, we'll completely lock down the bullpen door where employees come in that park this way and we'll lock the back door over here fully for, and the only employees that have the fobs to get in can get in. Our main doors will open at eight o'clock like normal. And I just wanted to know, do you want me to inquire about the Meridian Street doors to see if there's any reason to keep those open? Or should maybe we want to lock those down?
You'd have to talk with Jill and Brad, even though Brad hasn't, I think, has any...
The treasurer's office is kind of, yeah.
I think that would be good, Joanne.
Yeah, because I'm thinking to myself, if it's, if we're able to, that would be a good source of not having to have extra come in.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
All right.
I will second.
Roll call Amy.
Yeah.
Roll call Rhina.
Yes.
Yes.
Just one quick question. Do we have to sign Amy's a Mylar? Is there a specific color that we have to pass through?
Uh, that's how it is. Kind of like...
No, oh, this is for the annexation, so...